I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public Schools Board. Today is Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is six P M. This meeting is live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Before we get started, I'd like to thank members of the public for attending this school board business meeting to observe the work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. We appreciate the time you're taking to be here and for joining us online this evening. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. Under the consent agenda, we have several personnel personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, changes in assignment. We also have one item for individual action. This is a co-curricular ad. A request into the board consider adding for one year, a boys cross-country assistant coach due to the high levels of participation, and that is the table file for this evening.
Okay, thank you. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, also, as a note, the minutes that are included in this packet are for August twenty-sixth, but they say the twelfth as they were accidentally listed, so just make note of that, please. Is there a motion to approve this agenda as presented? Amy, first, Jeff, second, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. We now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting, and we do not have any public comments tonight, so we'll skip to section four, announcements and recognitions, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, we have several announcements this evening. First, we want to share that Greenville Park welcomed some special guests on the first day of school. Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, Commissioner of Education Willie Jett, and State Representative Christie Purcell helped serve the Gecko's lunch. They greeted students and wished everyone a fantastic start to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It was really fun to see those students on the first day of school and just that little bit of extra excitement. Every year, state officials start the school year at various places at the beginning of the day and during lunch, and we were honored that the governor's office picked Northfield to highlight this year. We also want to share that Northfield FFA members worked really hard at the Minnesota State Fair recently. As you know, this would have been the first year that Northfield FFA members attended the state fair under their own chapter, and we want to congratulate lots of students who had received ribbons and plaques, and then we also want to acknowledge their volunteer work. They recently assisted with parking admissions at the Rice County Steam and Gas Show, and just in its first year, FFA continues to show it's having an impact on our community. And then you'll see a delightful image on the screen here momentarily. If, there we go, thank you, Tim. Our Northfield High School Animal Science class students are fully engaged in learning about the care and management of Northfield High School's latest community members, the Raider Goats. And five goats are now living in the courtyard near the V Wing until the M E A break on October fourteenth, and then they'll return after spring break. This is an example of how our Northfield Ag Ed program is keeping agriculture top of mind for our high school students, and it's also saving a little bit of money on lawn mowing and fertilizer. So they do have shelter, they do have water, and then there'll be some more ability for our students and staff to interact with these goats as they get more accustomed to their temporary homes. So we want to thank T J Austin, and we did some more way to check city ordinance to make sure that this could happen and some of those kinds of things. So really created a stir at Northfield High School with these goats. So thanks, Tim, for bringing up that photo. I appreciate it. And then something we're going to add to each board meeting just over the next year here is we're gonna, it's gonna be something that we call the sesquicentennial minute. And I'm going to share just a very brief anecdote from Bruce Caldwell's book, City of Schools. And so tonight, I'm actually going to go even older school than the sesquicentennial. So it's a pre-sesquicentennial minute, if that's the appropriate terminology. So I want to go back to pages three and four in this book and just a few bullet points. So in eighteen fifty-six, twenty Northfield settlers pledged three hundred dollars total to construct the schoolhouse that sat on the corner of Union and Third Street, and that's my understanding is that that's where the U C C church sits today. So that was where the first schoolhouse before the school district was officially founded. And so just for those of you who are wondering, three hundred dollars in eighteen fifty-six translates into around eleven thousand, one hundred dollars today, according to the calculator I used on the internet. That same year, the precursor to the Northfield School District was founded, and three people served on that school board. The three, the first three school board members in Northfield were Ira Fields, Merrill White, and John North himself. They served on the first school board in eighteen fifty-six. That year was also the first tax that was levied to support the school. It was initiated that year, and they made several other financial decisions, like they charged tuition to those who lived outside the village but were attending the school. And then those who were attending the school but had not contributed toward the building of the schoolhouse were to pay four dollars, and that three and four dollar fee was for five months of service at the school. And in that first year, seventy-three students attended that Northfield Public School on Third and Union. So when you're driving on Third and Union, there's a lot of school history in that part of the community. So this is from pages three and four in this wonderful book, City of Schools, written by Bruce Caldwell. And again, throughout the entire sesquicentennial year, we'll share some thoughts from it very briefly at the beginning of the meeting. So we are really proud of the more than a hundred and fifty years of history that Northfield has had and really expecting excellent and high-quality public education. What was your announcements for this evening?
We're gonna get those at every meeting for this year, huh?
Yes.
Look forward to it. Other board members, do we have any other comments? All right, seeing them, we'll move ahead to items for discussion reports. First up for item A, we have Middle School Principal Greg Geleno here to provide the middle school improvement showcase, sharing successes and highlights from last school year and focus areas for the new school year. Welcome, Greg.
Hey, thank you. Tough to follow goats, but we'll try. So this is always one of the highlights of, for me, is being able to come here and address the board and to talk about some good things happening at the middle school, and I have to say a shout out to the new format. I'm actually prefer this format to the old one. So here we go. So like we always do, we always want to ground ourselves in our vision, our strategic plan, and strategic commitments, and I can say that as long as I've been principal in Northfield, that has been a a must, non-negotiable that I convey to our staff is that everything we do has to be connected. So when we say every student, we have to really dig into that, that we are making sure whenever we do any kind of type of change or any type of reevaluating is we really want to lean on that word every in our vision. Same with the strategic commitments, and you'll see in my presentation, I've actually taken the strategic commitments and kind of transform that to middle school language in a similar fashion. But I'll get to that later. But the strategic commitments are something that I talk to our staff about a lot, and it's really something that it's tangible. If you read these carefully, things that we do, things in a classroom, things we do in the hallways, things that we do when we make decisions, whether it be financial decisions or resource, resources, these are the things that want to be the forefront of those decisions and of those discussions. And then the benchmarks are things that obviously we want to make sure that they're kind of goals for me. I kind of view them as, okay, these are the things we're kind of aspiring to, things that we again, as you're kind of drilled down to see how you're doing, kind of dust the word benchmarks, but that's really kind of, I actually like expanding those in middle school terms to weigh and assess some other things as well. But these are kind of the district level for us to be able to make sure our, what we are doing at the middle school level is attaching to this, and it's something to strive for. So the new format, so our school improvement showcase. Again, I'm going to share a few successes. It's tough to narrow them down, but I think I have a couple of good ones for you. I'm going to talk about focus areas for the middle school, which for me is aligned to kind of the strategic commitments from just at a different level, the next lower down. So our focus areas that we have, and I will make sure I'm pointing out how it lines to our district strategic plan. And of course, you always want to have, whenever you come up with a plan, you want to have something that's actionable and align our efforts together to kind of get our arrows, so to speak, going in the same direction. And as I mentioned, always in the forefront is that word every. We want to make sure we're doing this to be able to benefit every student. But first, we'll jump back to last year just for a moment, and as a way to kind of close the loop, a couple bullets on my, on the goals that we had for our site improvement last year. And I can, I can say with confidence and kind of being proud that we made positive growth in every single one of our goals last year. A couple we didn't necessarily, well, one of them, we didn't actually meet, but we made really significant progress. The first one, the middle school improved our response on the employee experience survey question about having a positive culture, and you can see by the numbers that we did make a significant positive movement of that. And I can tell you that through our, the student process and through the survey and getting feedback from staff, that Mr. O'Keefe and I really made a conscious effort to lay out a plan. We did like a stoplight plan where we kind of here's how we're going to make this move. Here's how we're going to really address and make progress on this. And we set it forth, we really kind of reinvigorated a little bit of fun into the school year for our adults, which made them feel even better about coming to school, and I think that rubs off on our students. You could tell just their social emotional part of teaching and the kind of the grind throughout the year. We added fun things in throughout the year. I did some listening sessions for staff to be able to give them more opportunity to get feedback. So we really hit the culture hard, and I think it paid off with this as well as the the comments I got, the regular feedback I got from staff, is so much so at the, at the end of the year last year, they said, please, let's keep doing that, which we are. The next one is middle school. We continue the downward trend of lowering our, our Fs during quarter two in all three grades. I can honestly say, and I think I've said this before in the past, this is, this was attached to a grant, and I don't mind working on Fs or percentages or test scores, but it's not to me, I think that's pretty narrow sighted, but we did make good progress. We moved our sixth grade, dropped their S by almost six percent, our seventh grade by ten percent, and our eighth grade a little over fourteen percent. So we were trending, and we have been trending the last couple of years in a, in a great direction. Didn't hit the goal, which was a single-digit amount, but we are going in that direction, and we're getting closer and closer, and we'll continue that even though it's not technically a goal this year. And then the final one had to do with suspensions of our students of color. This one was a big deal to both Michael and I. We've done fairly well over the years, but last year we really saw it really take hold and do some really goods, good things. Our demographics, we wanted to really hit the five percent, and we were much lower than that. So I kind of tried breaking it down. Is there an average? But that's a little bit tough on how much we went down because it depended on the quarter. Some quarters we dropped by ten percent, some we dropped by twenty percent, but it did work out. And overall, I'm very pleased with how we, what we ended up with, with our students of color and reference to suspensions. We wanted to make sure we were equitably bringing that in line as it's just the right thing to do, but it also aligns with our district. So some highlights. So moving, the three highlights I'm gonna do for you today, this one is probably one that I know you've seen as we started Avid about four years ago. This year's our third year of having a cohort, and we moved our eighth graders last year to the high school this year. We're very proud of that. We kept for the most part, the cohort together, seventh, eighth grade. We had a few shift, a few students had dropped out, but we had other students that wanted to join instantly to fill those gaps. And we're excited. The students really had some great wins. They had confidence. I reported on a lot of that last year, so I'm fully expecting the high school now and confident that they will take them where they're at and continue to move them on their avid journey. So it's really exciting to see. They know they're the first group. They know that the first cohort, they recognize right off the bat that there's going to be some growing pains with starting any program, but those students are great, and they're dedicated to make sure they they really want to achieve their dreams. Many of their dreams are things that they hadn't thought about going into seventh grade, but now they're aspiring to actually strive for in the future. You can see the, the three benchmarks that this attaches to, but probably more, why I won't say more importantly, but as important is the equity and the learner outcomes as strategic commitments, and that's what Avid does. Avid really, that's what it's designed to do. It's those students that I'll call them kind of those bubble kids or those kids that aren't reaching their full potential. It's, it's giving them that extra scoop so that they can, we can equitably as a district be reaching those students and bringing them up to a higher level so they can reach and obtain those goals in the future for themselves. And it's a hard thing at a middle school because we talk all the time in Avid about how what we're building now, you're not going to reap the benefits until farther down the road, more in high school and beyond. That's a tough concept for middle schoolers, but they're doing great with it. The next one, as I mentioned, is also seeing progress made in the culture and had to find a way to get at least one of my granddaughters into the picture, so I did. So yep, upside down sunglasses, that's how she rolls. So we just really felt that we needed our staff to really feel even better. They like coming to the middle school. They like teaching. They were passionate about it. They felt good about it, but there was missing something. And as we kind of reflected, Michael and I reflected on it. It really was, we'd kind of gotten this, this routine of trying to do more push, 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 new initiatives and stuff, and we kind of forgot about, okay, we have to make sure that we're also supporting the culture, having fun along the way. We were doing some of that, but we weren't doing enough. And I think our staff really loud and clear gave us that message, and so we did a shift. So all of our employees now are not only satisfied, I'd take that a step farther, but they're just feeling good and excited to come to work each and every day, and that was a goal of ours. The next one was something else that when I started as principal that was non-negotiable is, has to do with respect. And then my expectation of all the adults in our building, whether they're a custodian, food service teacher, educational assistant, minister of assistant, or an administrator, is you will always treat people with respect, whether it be colleagues, students, families, or just a community member. And so this one was a good one to be able to reaffirm that we are doing that. And again, it's, it's kind of trying to hit the benchmarks. Which one does it hit? Do you have exact data to be able to prove some of these things? Probably not, but you, everyone knows that if you're treated with respect, you feel good about sending your kids to school. And that in turn, both socially emotionally for our students is a benefit, as well as our parents, our staff are confident and excited to send their kids, which then spreads to the community that the middle school is a a welcoming place, and we hear that on a regular basis. So it's all just kind of connected to build and support our students both academically as well as just as growing up into young adults. So feel great about that. Moving forward, so we have three slides, three focus areas, and that's exactly what I'm calling them at the middle school. And we actually have five of them. I'm going to just share three with you. I can let you know what the other five are. But the three I'm going to highlight today is, I want to make sure that the board understands that Avid is, we've moved a a group onto the high school, but it's not going away. So we keep building. So we've kind of taught Wicker strategies. We kind of did the professional development. We backed off a little bit, but had an expectation last year that staff would implement as many of the Wicker strategies into their content area throughout the year. Now we've kind of scaled it up again. Where now the expectation is, is that Wicker strategies would be implemented and embedded in all their units of study. And that's just a way of keeping it in the forefront, keeping Avid moving building wide. It's a great way, and I can, I can honestly say, one of the things with Avid too is that going through the training and what we heard from Avid students from other school districts is they felt like they were, they were singled out, or they felt different because they were doing things differently than other students in the building, and we don't hear that at the middle school. That's part of our working kind of backwards, which we're happy we did, where we went building wide first and then implemented the cohorts. So students are seeing other students, even if they're not in Avid, doing the Wicker strategies. So they don't, I won't say stick out, but they, they feel still part of the larger group, but yet they understand that they're in a program that is an honor to be in, and they feel that way. Again, I've talked about the equity and learner outcomes and how the strategic commitments. And then the benchmarks, as you can see, it hits, it hits three pretty clear there as well. So Avid's a great fit as far as I'm concerned, and I'm excited to see kind of it keep going forward. The next one is, is that we want every student to feel connected to at least one trusted about adult in the building. And originally I'd put two, but we do a survey that in the survey question, the way it reads is one, so I backed it off to one. And that, that does a lot of things, and I search long and hard for a good graphic, and I actually think this one does a nice job because part of being connected is really feeling trust, trusting the building, trusting that adult. And in order to get, build that trust, you have to have a commitment to kids and commitment to the school, a commitment to your colleagues. You have to be reliable. A student has to see you as someone they can, they can count on to go to. You have to act in integrity, doing the right thing all the time, being honest with students. You have to obviously be competent with your, what you do, and you have to be sincere and consistent. Students can, can kind of pick out when people aren't being sincere with them, so you just have to be that caring individual to get them to connect. And again, it's back to that culture. They have to enjoy coming to school and want to be at school. And the strategic commitment, it really just is hones in on the people piece of that as well as the all parents being satisfied, they're excited about their students coming to school because their students like coming to school as well as a couple others that are on there. And then we are also now something that's a little bit different for us as far as pointing it out. Our PLCs last year, they focused on high-impact strategies from a district-wide, and so our teachers were familiar with the high-impact strategies. I did a professional development lesson on this workshop on high-impact strategies, where we dug in a little bit different or a little bit deeper with those, and it's really looking at things differently. It's really looking at what you're doing in the classroom and really reflecting and analyzing, okay, am I, what am I doing? Is it not giving me the effects that I want? And if it's not, why is that? And then trying to lean on these high-impact strategies. So that will be on the forefront of everyone. We will keep revisiting those throughout the year. And again, it, as you can tell, it's almost like a broken record. I'm really hitting hard the equity and learner outcomes with the strategic commitments, and that's intentional. But also then for the benchmarks, it's really making sure all of our students are a grade level and reading in mathematics by the end of sixth grade for us, and then all parents reporting satisfaction of their, their students. And again, it is thinking differently. As our teachers really dove into the high impact, a lot of it isn't a lot different what they do, but some of it is. But it's really making our students to me, the next level is getting them to think for themselves, being able to not be afraid to make a mistake. You can learn, I tell students all the time, as well as adults, but I tell students is you learn more from your mistakes or learn more from the hard times than you do the easy times. And I worked at Burger King, so a lot of times when I go to McDonald's or I use McDonald's or Burger King as example, it's not that I'm bashing those places, but I said, hey, if you want something easy, you can work at Burger King. I flip burgers and I could do it my sleep. I mean, but kind of gets boring after a while. If you want something hard, work like at three M or work in an engineering company or work for a medical field or go be a welder where you have to do that, something that's higher level, something you have to learn. You have to use your brain. You have to use your hands. You have to think. That's where you really feel good about yourself, and that's where you can really strive to, to reach your goals that you want to be. Oh, I mentioned the other two. So those are three of the ones we did. Couple other ones we did is that all of our digital materials must, must be accessible in audio format. So if a teacher has anything of PDF form, and whether it be an article, something from a book, and luckily our textbooks are all audio accessible, our students are able to access them. It kind of levels the playing field for those that struggle reading, where they can actually listen to the material. And then the other one is the, oh, students who students who actively engage in some type of organizational tool. So we have planners, we've bought planners, but some students have chose not to, and that to use the planners, it read your digital format, that's fine. We'll support them either way. But all classrooms are expected and will make sure that students are tracking assignments, tracking what's coming up in some way that works for them. Middle schoolers, make sure they're not bouncing around, try it for a quarter, but it's really getting them, that's a skill that they need moving forward. It's a skill that I know a lot of our students struggle with, so we will be hitting that hard in sixth grade specifically with our new launch class. That is one of the focuses there as well. Now, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Greg, for your improvement showcase. Really appreciate it. Board members, questions or comments? Rob?
Thanks, Mr. Geleno. Can I ask you a question? How long have you been at the middle school?
This is year twenty-seven.
Okay, wow. So thank you for your service for all those years, and thank you for your report. And I'm just wondering because you talk about Avid, and you talk about a lot of things that probably you weren't talking about twenty-seven years ago. So there have been a lot of changes that you've seen over that time. So what are the things that really keep you excited and, and motivated to keep working with middle school students because it's a very difficult job and, and you do a good job, and I'm just wondering, like, what's your, what's your secret for carrying on for twenty-seven years?
I joke with our students, I haven't figured out how to graduate from middle school yet, but you have to love middle schoolers. To me, you know, I, for those that have been around a while, I did a short stint at the high school to fill in for Barney Thompson for a short time. And I loved it, enjoyed it, got to see my old students and stuff. That was great. But I was excited to come back to middle school. I just love where middle schools are at. I feel that you can really make a difference. Middle school is someplace where not that the high school isn't impressionable, but they are over-impression, really impressionable at the middle levels. And the most difficult of kids, you can really make a difference in their lives. And over the years, yes, I've seen a great huge change, whether it be the students that are coming to us are different. They have different needs. They all want to succeed. They all respect, you know, school, and they like teachers and stuff, so that's that's, that part's great, but the skills they come to us with and their, the things that happen outside of school that have an effect on their their lives and how they view things and their work ethic, that all those things have changed over time. And that has kind of driven me to always want to stay ahead of the curve. There's always something else. What, you know, Dr. Hillman's saying, what's next? So I go, okay, things are going well, but okay, but they can always be doing better. And that's if you ask my entire family at home, they'll know. It's just like, nope, well, this is great, but now what can we do? What, how can we do better than what we already have? And I just, I get energized from that is to looking, actively looking for those things to do better.
Thanks very much. Other board members, Amy?
Thank you, Principal Geleno. It's always good to hear from you. I have sort of three areas of questions that and I just want to cover them. So the first one is I'm trying to understand the difference between the Employee Experience Survey and the question of creating a culture of success for all employees. Were those two different questions?
They were actually the same question. I should have, the first slide I should have. The second slide has exact language. The first one, I kind of paraphrased it, but it's the same question that's there.
Okay, and that's on, on a scale of one to five, and what's, what's three? When people, if it's people to answer three, is that a neutral or what is that?
It's a, it's a Leica scale, so it's a sliding scale, so it's not like the middle's neutral and the bottoms, it's, that's not the way, it's just a sliding scale on how that works. So the closer, obviously, you get the five, the better you are, and it's all based on an average score. The challenge comes in, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Hillman, is we have, it's not just licensed teachers, multiple different people do take that survey, so it's a little bit of a challenge to figure out. Okay, is it licensed staff or is it educational assistants or who's doing that? But I think we've done a better job kind of figuring that out as well.
Okay, so even a one would mean they're satisfied?
No.
So that's what I don't understand.
The scale is one to five with one being strongly disagree, two being disagree, three being neutral or mixed feelings, four being agree, and five being strongly agree.
Okay, so here's, I'm sorry to get into the, into the weeds here, but I, I'm trying to understand the math side of it. If we have, I think it's great that your employee experience I think it's great that your employee experience survey, um, average increased and substantially. So good job. But we're still at three point eight four.
Yep.
And it seems to me if people had said they agreed, if everyone had said they agreed or. Strongly agreed, we'd be over four. And that's the part that I'm not understanding.
Yep. And that's. That's still, we want to keep moving it forward. So the, the win is the fact or the thing to celebrate is the fact that we're moving it forward. We're not going the other way. We didn't stay neutral. We're still, we're continued, we're now starting to keep moving that forward. So I would hope that we get up over four now. Um, this next year, um, that would be to continue. I just don't have a set focus area for that. That's something we're going to continue to work on.
So the employee experience survey has a battery of around twenty questions, um, that we have been administering since probably twenty seventeen. And one of the key things that we look at is year over year improvement. So what buildings are expected to do with the employee experience survey each year is they do what's called a rollout. So after the survey is complete, they hold a meeting with staff. They highlight the two areas that have the highest ratings. And they ask them, the employees to help them figure out, why did we achieve those high ratings? And then the two that have the lowest ratings, that's what principals develop an action plan based on. And so we are looking to take those lowest rated areas, create intentional action plan to move those ahead. And so I, if I remember correctly here, just from the presentation of point one, seven or so increase. On a five point scale on that question. Um, if you being, we talk in mathematics and statistics, you know that a point one, seven year over year. On a five point Likert scale, that demonstrates significant improvement. So one of the things that in our what's next philosophy is that. Even if we aren't to where we want to be yet, we want to celebrate those circumstances where we took something that we were dissatisfied with. And made significant improvement. So. It's one thing to be at four point two or four point five and maintain that. That's hard enough, right? But to make that significant improvement year over year. Um, of a point one, seven, we really talk about those incremental wins. And I think that really is what the middle school. Improvement showcases is focusing on. Yes, there certainly is more work to do. But that significant progress is something to be celebrated. And so. We encourage, even if we did not make it all the way to where we think is the destination. When we are making that progress, that starts to get, we use an analogy with our administrative team called the flywheel, right? And that when we get good practices going, like what Mr. Gellino shared, making sure that staff are coming together. They're doing things other than that hard nose to the grindstone kind of work. They're getting to know each other. There's some celebration. You start that flywheel turning, people start feeling differently about the work that they're doing and we're moving in that positive direction. So. You will hear regularly our departments and our administrators talking about the lowest scores. With great pride because they have moved the needle in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you. I was just trying to understand what was being said between those two comments. And I think you've added some extra information there.
Um, there's one more comment on the surveys I would make if that's okay, is that another way that we look at it is you'll see in, um, Mr. Gellino's, um. Narrative, he talked about the top box. So we also talk about something that's called top box score. What, what's the percentage of people who gave that particular indicator? The highest score possible. As we continue to think about that. We really look at it and say, okay, it's really about the top two boxes, right? Agree and strongly agree. So what percentage of people? Gave that indicator, the agree or strongly agree. And I, while Mr. Gellino really did a nice job of talking about, uh, uh, four point two six on a Likert scale for the parent. Satisfaction survey of I am treated with respect to school. He was underselling it in my opinion. Because when you look at the agree and strongly agree, that total is around ninety percent of the respondents. So even with a four point two six. Nine out of ten people who took that survey said that they felt respected at the middle school. And while we of course want everyone to feel respected every given day, right? There's. Somebody was having a bad day, those kinds of things. I think that's a testament, uh, to how the middle school uses this data, which I will tell you. Can sometimes be very hard to read. Sometimes the comments and the things that are in these surveys can be very difficult for reader, for leaders to read. And yet they lean into it and they create these action plans to move forward. So while we were talking about surveys, I wanted just to add that part in. About the parent satisfaction survey.
Okay. So that was my first area. So thank you for helping me understand that. And again, congratulations on moving the needle significantly with your employees. And I look forward to hearing more about it in the future as you. Continue to increase that number. Um. My second question is, um, I don't quite understand how you measure the suspensions. Um, you talk about how you reduce them by five percent, but I don't understand what it's a percent of. So if you could just elaborate on that.
So we take the overall number of suspension, we do it by quarter typically, and then we'll do a full year. So we take the overall number. And then we break that down to, okay, how many of those suspensions were students of color? How many were, um, low income? How many were, um, just special education? And so we break it down into these categories. So in this particular goal, we wanted to focus on our students of color. We had saw a few years ago that our students of color were being suspended at a higher rate. Um, which we were not okay with. And so we dug into the why and did a lot of educating with our staff. And then, um, we did some difference, different things administratively on how we view. Some, um, discipline things and how we worked with our families and our students. Um, so when you, it says a decrease, that's what it is, is we just take a straight percent. Of total number of suspensions and then a total number of those suspensions that are students of color and is created percent.
So if you had a hundred suspensions and fifty of them were students of color, it would be fifty percent?
Correct.
And if then the next time you had forty five. Out of a hundred, these students of color, you would have decreased it by five percent? Is that?
Yes, but I did the year. So what I did is we, we look at it quarterly, but then we figure out the whole year. So last year. We decreased, um. That percentage based, based on previous years. So the previous year we decreased it from that. So I was comparing year to year versus quarter to quarter.
Okay, I sort of understand. I'll, I'll talk to you more about it sometime.
I think it's really about percentage points, right? So it's about when you analyze one year to the next year, there was a drop or a reduction in the percentage of students who met that criteria. So the total number, as you described, it's about comparing the percent of one year suspensions to the next and what was the makeup of that?
Okay. No, I get it. I think it's, it's, it's actual incidences and not students. And so I didn't understand what initially what the percentage was, the percentage of.
Yeah.
We'll see if Jenny or Jeff have a comment. Ready?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead and finish then, Amy.
All right. Uh, so my third area that I'm interested in is I do want to learn a little bit more about avid. I know you talked to us about it before, but if you could refresh my mind, because it's been a year. Um, uh, how, if you choose the students, how many students are brought into the program? What extra services or what's involved in being part of the student, uh, that. Program for the students? So what, what are they experiencing? Um, and just explain it a little bit more.
Sure. So, um. The way this works is we have avid in seventh and eighth grade only. Um, there is a sixth grade program, but it's actually connected to an elementary program in avid, which our elementaries could surely do. Um, but we just don't, we don't do a cohort of kids. So what happens is in sixth grade is a. Sixth grade teachers who, cause we've done building wide, they, they know about avid, they know the strategies, they know. We've talked to them about, um, kind of the demographic of students we're looking at. We're looking for. Um, not just students of color, but students of color is one of them. But we want those students that. Are not reaching their full potential. Students are getting maybe those consistencies, maybe some Ds. Um, occasional Bs and when they really should be getting pretty much all As and Bs. They're just not. Um, doing as well as they should within the general, um, setting. Uh, they could be students that are special education students. We have some students in avid that are special education students. They could be. Um, ML students, uh, it could be anywhere across the board. So we look at, um, test scores, we look at grades, we do teach a lot on teacher recommendation and we try narrowing it down to what's. What group of students would be, um, good fit? And then those students get invited, um, to apply. And we do a meeting, we taught, we send the parents some information about avid. Um, we, um, meet with the students, we have avid students come talk to the students. Our seventh, eighth grade avid students talk to the sixth grade students about why they like avid and the things they like and things they struggled with and things. Why they're going to continue. Um, and then parents come in that are interested, come in for a meeting. We hold a, a meeting in the evening. Um, we explain, we go through just the really finer details of avid, what avid really is, what it stands for. What, um, what it means to be in avid. Um, and then they have to apply. And then when they apply, we kind of look. Okay, we can take roughly about twenty, up to twenty eight students, um, in the program each year. Um, thankfully we've, we've come that twenty six to twenty eight every year. So it's been nice that we've been able to just accept everyone. We haven't had to make that tough decision. Uh, which has been great. Um, but then those students, they take an everyday avid class. So it's going to replace something in their schedule. We're very open with parents about that and students. Um, they have to make some decisions. Avid goes on a schedule where every Tuesday and Thursday they do something that's called a tutorial and it's not being tutored. It's different and it's part of this mind chef. It's part of getting students to think for themselves and help themselves and learn how to collaborate. So they work in small groups and they bring, um. Uh, point of contention or it's a basically a problem from a class and they do that and then they. They do this cognitive coaching. So instead of saying, oh, you just do this, you divide the three and telling them what to do. They just ask the person who has the question, questions to get them to work towards the answer themselves. So they struggle with it. It takes a while. Takes some practice to learn how to do that. Um, but they don't go through, get through many questions. They're lucky to get through two questions in a class period. So we're very clear that when you join avid, you're, it's not a study hall. You, you're not going to get your homework. The homework is, is expected to be done outside of school. Um, here you're going to work out with skills, you're going to work on organization, you're going to work on, um, test taking skills. You're going to work on. Um, the Wicker strategies even more than you do in the regular classroom. You're going to have these tutorials, which is learning in itself. In addition to that, now every year and this year, we're really ra- ratcheting it up. They have, they go visit colleges and that's brand new for most of my avid students. They've never been on a college campus, even. If someone would happen to have had a, a sibling go to college, a lot of them say, well, I've never been there. Or I went just for a football game, but they haven't really won. So like this year, they're going to go to the U of M, they're going to go to St. Olaf. Um, they go to Mankato, uh, there's different schools that they go and that those colleges put on a program forum and give them a tour and talk about what it means to be part of a college. They get to be on campus, they get to eat lunch there, they get to do it. And pretty soon they come back and it is really cool to see. The looks on their face and how excited they get, but then now all of a sudden. Instead of just talking about going maybe to school beyond high school, they can envision themselves actually sitting in a seat in a classroom and actually attending. And these are students, remember that, um, many of them, uh, could be first generation. They could be students that before avid, they'd never even considered going to a four year school. Um, they'll go to, um, two year schools as well, um, and take tours there as well. Um, now they're going to have speakers come in, they're going to have speakers in different career alumni are going to come back that are being successful and talk to them about. Hey, here's my journey through Northfield. Here's where I ended up. Here's, you know, here's my encouragement to you. Here's what I do. Um, type of thing, actually. Two of my kids are, two of them are going to come and do that. Um, and they're going to speak to them. And it's really keeping. Careers, keeping, here's why education is important. Here's what you can do it. Um, you know, I wasn't this huge honor student, which those students are great. Um, they're all, they're going to do, be successful with the students. We're talking about students that don't typically fit that realm. Um, and then in addition to all of that, one of the main goals of avid is, is that at some point in time in high school. They take an AP class or a very high level honors class. And so they're working towards that. And again, the students we're talking about on their own, without avid would never consider it ever. And so, but now they do and they envision themselves taking that and building these skills in the future. Which only benefits them no matter what they choose to do after high school.
Thank you. It sounds like a great program.
It is.
All right. Any other comments? One, one comment and one question for me. I'll try to make it quick. So. As a first time family, last year at the middle school, we had a really good experience. So just want to commend you and your staff for the efforts. Uh, from teachers to EAs to the front office, to administration, to the nurse's office. Everyone was great in supporting our child and. All the ways she needed to be supported. So thank you for that. Uh, concerning avid, just to kind of dovetail off what Amy was saying, I was kind of curious. You talked about the first cohort moving on to the high school. For those of you administering this program, what are some of the greatest lessons you've picked up in this program? I know you touched on a little bit, but. Just kind of to cap this off, what are some of the bigger lessons you're taking forward with you?
Um, I did not see, I didn't, I didn't see the leadership skills that our students were going to, um. Get by being.
Just to be clear, I'm talking about staff for those of you who are.
I'm sorry.
Managing the program.
Oh, got it. So, um. I did, yeah, but staff lessons, just make sure I'm.
Yeah, to tweak the program.
Oh, got it. Now I understand the question. Um. I think the biggest thing is, is that we need to keep pushing our students. So like any program, when you start it, you, you're. A little bit unsure when you're starting, you're excited about it, you do it, but now. A Katie Lovren who teaches the elective classes every year, she's wrapped it up and wrapped it up. And I think we, we found that we can expect more from our students. We can start expecting them to. Um, where maybe our bar was here and now we're, we keep raising it up. It's like, oh, they can do a lot more than what we thought maybe. So we keep pushing the envelope with that. Um, I think we've learned, which is why we're bringing them to more campuses. Um, two and four year and why we're having speakers now come in and more talk to them that we. We see that as being kind of a really big hook and motivator for our students. But I should also say we did an end of the year showcase, we're invited, well, all of you were invited, um, as well, but. Families came in and they got to show off the work they've done and here's my path and here's what I'm thinking of doing and they could explain it. Um, and again, just. Students doing more, um, than what we originally thought they could do is probably the biggest lesson, I think, as a staff that we've learned.
All right. Thanks, Greg.
Yep.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we welcome activities director, John Mahal. He will provide the board with an overview of the activities department, successes. And highlights from last year's school year and discuss focus areas for the coming year. Welcome, John.
Uh, Logan, uh, thanks for the opportunity to be here with all of you and, uh, speak a little bit about activities from last year. I know last year when I stood here. I had an idea of what the job was all about. Uh, now I definitely have more of an idea of what the job is about. And, uh, of course the time commitments that it takes to be in this role. Uh, so. Uh, our strategic plan, I think within activities. We do a great job of, uh, supporting this goal, uh, this vision. In terms of trying to prepare every student to be successful, uh, again, like it says there. Uh, not only in the classroom, but again, we really partner as much as we possibly can, you know, our, our, our. Coaches, our advisors with our classroom teachers, uh, so that. Again, it, it's, uh, their learning skills are working through different things to be able to be. Uh, successful in problem solve and work through different things, uh, you know, throughout the season that they're in. So. Uh, I'm really pleased with what our coaches and advisors again are what we're doing to support, uh, the strategic plan. When you think about the strategic commitments, uh, we're definitely, uh, in a lot of this, we're intertwined. Uh, we're definitely a people, uh. Group in terms of, we have a lot of, again, coaches, advisors. Uh, you'll see here in a little bit, we have over five hundred families that we work with. Uh, in terms of trying to communicate and make sure. Have an understanding of where we're trying to go and what we're trying to do. Uh, so we, lots of people, lots of communication needs to happen there, which is right below that one as well. That would definitely try to communicate in a lot of different areas, a lot of different modes, so that again, people have as much information as they, uh, need or desire. Uh, the learner outcomes, again, it goes right along with, again, the academic side of things. It's important that our students, uh, are prepared, not only academically, but socially. And. Uh, so when they go on to the world, they know how to handle certain situations because they've had an opportunity to experience that. Whether it be a challenge during the season, or maybe that's a success. Uh, stewardship. This was definitely an area of coming into just trying to learn and understand, uh, what our budgets were about. I had the opportunity this summer to, to work with Val. Uh, much more on a detailed level to better understand and make adjustments within our budgets, but we were, um. I think very fiscally responsible with, uh, again, each budget and the overall budget, which, uh. Again, very pleased with. We try to make sure equity wise, every student has an opportunity to participate. Um, again, it might not always be at the level that they want to be at depending on their skills. Uh, but this is definitely something that we want, uh, as much higher participation rates as possible. And then again, as you'll hear here in just a little bit, we definitely, uh, work through a lot of partnerships, uh, within. Our community so that we can hopefully do some great things for our students, uh, and staff, of course. As you'll hear coming up here around the highlights and focus areas for me, uh, I've definitely tried to connect as much as I possibly can to the district benchmarks. Uh, so that, so you'll see that as we move forward here. Uh, again. What I'll start with is kind of an overall, uh, review of last. Review of last year and then again, talk through. Again, what are the focus areas moving forward? That we're going to continue to focus on as a, as a department. All right. So you can see last year. The goal was eighty-five percent of respondents would, you know, score a four or a five on a five-point scale. Similar to what you all were just talking about with Mr. Jellino. You can see the results for that were eighty-three percent, which, uh, so we didn't quite make that goal, but still a very high. Positive experience. So family engagement was high and you'll see here in just a little bit, it was important for me. I know one of the goals that I had was. To make sure that these. Surveys were sent out to all of our families and caretakers, all of our students that were participating in the different activities. To try to get as much of a full range of, of information coming back in. Because I know the previous year, I think just it happened, there's a couple of different quarters or seasons, not, not each season. So I'm pleased with that overall. Learner outcomes, eighty-three percent of participants will agree or strongly agree that they feel. Connected to their school or community and you can see our students rated themselves as eighty-eight percent there. So they definitely felt connected. Probably helps with the amount of success that we had last year. They, they felt overall really good about what they did. Just as a, as a full group and I'll speak to that in a moment. And then our bleacher captains. Will report positive student spectator behavior a hundred percent of the time and we met that goal. Again, we have spectator supervisors that are at many of our events throughout the school year to help. Our students and our bleacher captains to make sure that, uh, again, the, the positive. Let's cheer for us, not against officials, that teams are happening. And, and again, I'll speak to that a little bit more as we move forward, but. Uh, again, very awesome to be able to see that. Also wanted to make sure to. Share that, you know, last year, when you think about our individual or teams. That went to some type of either individual or, or team state tournament. Twenty-one out of the thirty-nine. Teams that we have. Which is about fifty-four percent went to state. Which is amazing. I mean, what a great problem to have. And then, you know, when we think about. Other activity or individual teams, you know, rock and revival, every show was sold out. Speech, they went to state. Mock trial, they went to state. Knowledgeable, they went to state and we had to get an extra coach because of the, the numbers. Of students that wanted to participate there. Fishing team, they went to state, got a chance to see some of their bass. That was kind of fun. He spoke about FFA earlier, uh, that chapter is alive and well for sure. Uh, you can definitely see the excitement there. Uh, our cheer team is, I know it's under the community education umbrella, but they're a popular, you know, there's fourteen, fifteen of them right now in it. And that was the same last year. Music. The Northfield High School Band had a chance to go to the Minneapolis Convention Center, which is an invite only, uh, last February, I believe it was. So they got a chance to play at a very exclusive event. That, uh, again, not many people get a chance or schools get a chance to do. So great to celebrate that with them. And of course our district band or district orchestra, you know, are, it's just really well attended events. Every time that they happen. So overall, you know, it's fun to be able to see, we have such an engaged sports and activities community here in Northfield. And there's multiple opportunities for our students to be involved. In something that they are interested or choose to do. Each season, uh, which again, after being in this role now for a year, I can definitely say is not the case in every community. So we're very fortunate with that. Some highlights, uh, again, from our family caretaker survey, you can see there. That again, everybody each. After each season specifically sent it out via email to all of the people that were registered in those sports. Uh, each team or program had their specific results, of course, but that helps me, uh, with conversations to be able to dive deeper. Uh, if and when there were themes of information that, you know, wanted to talk more about, uh, dive a little bit deeper. Or again, to celebrate, uh, tho- those end of the season conversations, that data definitely helped, uh, with that. With our coaches and advisors. Uh, this is something that I'm really pleased that we were able to do, uh, in my first year back here in Northfield was. We had at the end of the, uh, the spring season, so in early June, we had two guest speakers come in. And, uh, help provide a little professional development for our coaches. This is something that hadn't happened. Prior, well, and probably since COVID. Uh, so it's been a little bit of time since that's happened. But again, it, I had great feedback from our coaches around, uh, the opportunity to get together, to learn together. To talk through, to listen around common themes that come up. And, and how do they work through that? Um, because. You know, yes, in instances can be, uh, specific to that sport, but there's also a lot of commonality that happens as well. And then we're able to, I'm sure, I think when, uh, Mr. Byer was here, he spoke to Raiders lead. There at the high school and a lot of our coaches. And advisors are now working on weaving that into the, the, their language and their concepts within their program. Because it's really important for our students to see themselves as leaders around the, uh, building, yes, but then also. How can they also be leaders within their activities that they're a part of? Uh, and like I say, there at the bottom there, we need all of them to be leaders of themselves before we can lead others. So again, they're, they're hearing it from multiple, uh, places, which hopefully will have a great impact, uh, for them as they move forward. Another highlight again, bleacher captains. A lot of positive. Cheering that happened last year for, in a lot of different places. This is definitely can be a difference maker for our teams as they're competing. And we, uh, have a couple of different districts, even within the big nine now that have definitely commented on how classy our students are. And they wouldn't, they want to be able to start duplicating what we're trying to do. For this again. For the competition experience. Because again, I think we know this can be an area where it can get kind of nasty sometimes. And our students have done a fantastic job of following the bleacher captains. Lead and making sure that, uh, you know, again, we're cheering for us, for us and not against others. Our focus area then, uh, again, aligning with benchmark number nine there. Is to continue to understand, uh, you know. Just, uh, sorry. Just again, asking our families and caretakers. Uh, what their experience is like. I think that's a definite part of how we continue to grow, how we continue to get better. Is to learn and understand more information from them. Again, we're going to try and get it right most every time, but if we don't, we need to hear about it. We need to know about it so that we can continue to. To improve. Definitely want to continue our head coach professional development. It's a, it's a little bit unknown in terms of exactly who we'll try to bring in right now. But in terms of how we want to try and move forward to help support our coaches and advisors. Is important in my mind so that we can again, continue to do great things with our kids. Uh, not only just, you know, the X's and O's, that's important for sure. But you know, how do you run a successful program? How do you stay within budget? Uh, how do you handle certain conversations that you might have to have with, uh, someone that isn't happy about a situation? Uh, those are things that we need to continue to learn and grow so that we can again, just not be satisfied with, with what we're just, what we're doing already. And finally, uh, our focus area will definitely continue to be, uh, our bleacher captain program. This, uh, we brought in. DJ Hillier, uh, to come in and speak with our students already. Uh, that was our rally kids, uh, this fall. So on the second day, I think it was the thirteenth of August, we brought him in, uh, to speak with our kids for an hour. Uh, around a lot of the concepts that were already. Providing them, but it's always good to hear from a new voice. Uh, it just helps hopefully. Deepen that, hey, all right. Our teachers and advisors, you know, they're, they are telling us, uh, good quality things. Uh, so it just helps again, just solidify that. But again, that training that we do every year is done before school, but then there's also, uh, quarterly conversations and check-ins. Uh, just to make sure that, you know, do they have what they need to be successful in terms of. You know, how's the cheering going? Is there any issues when they're in the, the stands? What can we do to help support, uh, as staff members? So again, overall, this is definitely a continued focus because like I said, many other districts are definitely intrigued and, and want to hopefully. Uh, do some other things that we're doing there. And I put this in, uh, here, uh, at the end, just I wanted to make sure that everybody could see. You know, I think it was a couple of years ago, the board made a decision, uh, to raise, uh, fees at the high school. And you can see over the last two years, our numbers continue to be strong, if not growing. Uh, so that hasn't been a deterrent. For our students to access what they want to be able to do. You know, if and when things come up, if there's a financial hardship, we. Uh, have opportunities to make sure that that doesn't get in the way of them participating. So everyone that has wanted to participate in something. Has had that opportunity. And again, I just wanted to make sure that you all had the opportunity to see that. So. I was a little worried with the boys soccer one because that's a difference, but they had a huge senior class last year. So it wasn't much to do there. So, uh, and I wanted to make sure, obviously, you know, the volleyball picture, but then. Jay Cravy there, what a great picture of him winning the state title last year. That's up in the high school too, if you walked around the hallways. So. So with that. Any, uh, questions that I can answer for you?
Thanks, John. Appreciate you being here tonight. You have to work longer hours with as much success as our programs have had.
Yes, uh, it was definitely. Again, great problem to have. Uh, and I think I'm, I'm pleased to be able to do it because I, I definitely, I enjoy, uh, the grind, if you will. And, and just doing whatever I can to make sure that, you know, our coaches have what they need so that they can do great things with kids.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Jeff?
John, thanks for your report. Um, my question would be around the Minnesota State High School League. I know a lot of things from a lot of people. Kind of don't understand that they really kind of set the rules for pretty much a lot of things. And I guess. Thought you've been here a while, kind of, uh, lessons learned on pros and cons of. The Minnesota State High School League and how people can kind of be confusing. It is confusing from one sport can be. You know, one class and the other class. So what has been your experience of, you know, how you. Tell and educate people on that and then kind of maybe just some pros and cons of working with.
Sure. It's definitely been a learning curve with the state high school league in terms of, like, like you mentioned, who can do what? Because, you know, like the transfer portal. Again, I won't get too deep in Louise, but basically if you're a ten through twelve student and you transfer here from another community. We have to do what's called a transfer portal and just figure out, you know, where are you coming from? Who's got eligibility? You know, were you in good standing in your previous school and all that kind of stuff? And so to go through that with everybody to understand, uh, okay, yes, you can be eligible for varsity sports or no, you can't. Because of whatever reason, uh, that's definitely been learning, uh, learning point. You know, we, we dropped from, so last school year, we dropped from, uh, basically. Four A, if you will, down to three A, which I think that had something to do with our overall success and our activities last year as well. Uh, and that's basic again, on your number of students that you have. And we're always kind of right there in terms of, are we in the four or we, or we are right now in the three? Hopefully we get a chance to continue to stay where we are because we're one of the bigger schools in three A, which allows us to be very competitive. Yeah, it, it's been a learning curve for sure. Trying to learn. I, I know I asked them, you know, if things come up. I lean on, well, former AD Tom Grauman quite a bit, talked with Bubba quite a bit, uh, but I'll, I'll definitely. Call or email or connect with the state high school league to, hey, here's a situation. You know, this is what I'm thinking based on the guidance from the handbook, but am I reading this correctly? And so they've been a great help in terms of just trying to help make sure we're making good decisions. Or the correct decision.
Others. Ben, welcome.
Thank you, Corey. Good to be here. Thanks, John. Great, great report. Yeah, so much success to celebrate, certainly over this last year. When it, just a quick question on the, the goals on that slide, you had. Uh, I think eighty-five percent of respondents, et cetera, et cetera. Are those the same numbers that we're looking at for this next year as well in terms of?
Yeah, I would say as we move forward, percentage wise, I would want to at least be in that eighty-five percent ballpark, if not trying to exceed that. I know we were at eighty-three this year, so if we can get to that eighty-five percent, that would be fantastic.
And then, um, just a quick question too, and I appreciate it that you pointed out, obviously with, this board had a tough decision to make a few years ago, just in terms of. Those fees. I'm glad that you mentioned that. Are you, are we seeing any uptick in terms of people using or, or requesting? Assistance for those fees or do you have that data?
You know, last year we had just a very small handful. This year we've probably had five or six so far. And that's just for the fall. So if that trend were to continue, we would definitely have more this year than we did last year. But it's still, I think. Yeah, a, a small percentage overall.
Good, thanks.
Rob, you had a question?
Yeah, um. Thanks for your report. Um, I'm just curious, you've had. Really good success in the past year with a lot of teams going to state and. There are a lot of people who might say, well, we're having so much success, the way things are, why do we need? A new gym. So I'm just wondering what would the positive impact be of question two on, on your program?
Boy, it would go a long way to have a new space there. There's no question about that. And not only like. Full disclosure, I'm sitting over here texting the coach about gym space and practice times. That we, we don't have enough of it. We just don't. Even that's right now. Yeah, sorry. That's even right now here in the fall. And winter is when it gets extremely tight with space. But the other thing that I would point out is, you know, should question two pass? Now it allows us to have, uh, not only the, the four extra spaces, gym or floor spaces. But it allows us to update the gym and, you know, just two weeks ago, I wasn't sure if we would be able to have a volleyball game happen. Because the floor was so sweaty. Because of just the humidity. I mean, there was no, there's no way to cool that space down. I had six fans blowing at the floor. Just trying to keep it as dry as possible so that it was safe enough for the, both teams to be able to play. So, uh, the need is real in terms of space. Not only just to help with practicing, but again, to allow our competitions to happen in a, a safe manner, uh, for everybody.
Thanks for that question, Rob, over here. Anyone? Amy?
Don't want to steal Jenny's question again. So first of all, exciting report. What a great year we've had and I hope you're enjoying overseeing it all. Because wow, this is a good district to be part of. Um, and I really appreciate your answer to Rob's question about our need for the additional. Gymnasium space. Um, I think. People don't understand what constraints we have, so I appreciate your outlining this a little bit. Um, I have a couple of numbers of, uh, questions about numbers. So first of all, I love that you reported this time on the non-sport activities. Cause you know, I'll, I think all activities are great, but I sometimes think sports overshadow the non-sports. And so you did mention some of those. Um, so thank you for that.
Of course.
And successes with that.
Yeah.
One of the numbers you had, which was eighty, eight percent of the students felt more connected. I thought that's a great number, but it made me think of. Um, are there some, I mean, was it eighty-eight percent across the activities pretty consistently? Or was there some activities that really only fifty percent of this? Participants felt connected and others at a hundred percent felt connected. And did you see any patterns like that?
It was definitely, uh, you know, each season kind of had their percentages, if you will. So it was all three combined, obviously into the, into the one. You know, overall. The, our teams are, are. the our teams are are, you know, whether they be sports or whether they be uh any of our other activities. There was a lot of, uh let me say this, I kind of referenced it in in my previous, one of the previous slides in terms of more often than not, our people, our students were happy, our students were uh connected. They felt like, and one of the questions I asked, and it was, did you have fun? Because yes, you want to compete, you also want to have fun with what you're doing too, you know, um. And and so more often than not, w- we had above eighty percent or that eighty to ninety percent threshold. Uh were there a couple of different spots where it wasn't as high? Yes. But that allowed me then, like I mentioned, to be able to have those conversations with those coaches or advisors to better understand the why. You know, why might that have been something that that wasn't rated as high? Um so overall, kids had a great experience. Um and like I said, we definitely had conversations with uh those programs that it might have been a little bit lower to, again, just to better understand the why. And and what adjustments do we need to make? Potentially moving forward to to try to help support that.
Great. Um that that's all sounds good. You're looking at the numbers. Um my other question is about total numbers, because it was great to see these participation rates, but we have far more activities than you showed here. And I would be curious if you had a sense of a total number of students who um participated in all of the sports and also the non-sport activities that are available. And then sort of a de-duped version of that where, so we can know what percentage of the high school students are actually participating in one or more activity.
I think that's something that I can find for you, um because some of our activities are under the community education umbrella. And so they don't necessarily register through our office. So what you see here is who has registered through the activities office. But I can, I think, uh to connect with our community education department to get that information to be able to provide. So we can see uh a more full picture around the number of students that are participating uh throughout the school year. No problem.
I only ask because I think it'll be another win. I think we have a high participation rate, and it would be nice to have numbers to quote on that.
Sure. I think you're correct with that, yes.
All right. And I've got the data right here for almost all of the stuff from last year. Um and you saw significant year over year um by activity. There are a handful of activities that are not in the spreadsheet that I have. Um so we've got the data, we can certainly provide that to board members uh in next week's board bulletin.
Thank you both.
Got it.
All right, Jenny, did you have any questions? I have a few questions, Sean. I think mine are all, oh, I'm sorry, Rob, you had one?
I had another question. Um this is just me kind of getting back up to speed on the board again. Um I remember uh activities depend a lot on uh more than other things on fundraising. So I was just looking at the fundraising report from July to and I remember maybe twelve years ago when I was on the board, it was always like a thing in the audit that there was the internal controls with getting all the money from all these different things uh recorded correctly. Um and since you're fairly new in the position, I mean, has that been a problem? Is that an issue that comes up? I mean, maybe Val can talk about that too. Just always curious, because there's money coming from so many different directions.
You want to tackle that one?
I'm a finance expert now.
Um so, yes, it's still a thing. There's lots of money that comes from lots of different places. Um we've done, I would say, a pretty large push in my, from my office and department to provide online opportunities if possible. So we have some things set up on RevTrack um where families to kind of reduce that cash and check situation. Um but in terms of the audit findings that you're referencing, uh in twenty, I'll get it wrong, twenty eighteen or nineteen, they actually switched uh the accounting protocol for that. And so now it's just part of the general fund rather than its own fund. And so that alleviated quite a few of those um issues that they were looking for. It's just part of our overall big picture now. And so they treat it that same way. And as long as all of the processes seem to be working with what they're testing, then they consider it fine. Um but we have uh the fundraising report is actually a new requirement um from the statute from probably three years ago. There's still a lot of that. Um it changes each year. Some of them are always the same and some are different, but um that's, it's a big way they support some of the extra stuff that they want to do that's above and beyond what the district budget can do. Did that answer your question? Okay.
And I know we we to piggyback on that, we uh provide a a guidance sheet for our coaches and advisors each year to help make sure that they know hey, if you're going to be doing any fundraising, here's kind of your parameters and what you need to be able to do for reporting purposes.
Okay, other questions? All right, just three quick ones. Uh so I attended the home opener for football, which was great. Well, the outcome wasn't great, but the event was great. And I was uh surprised to hear and pleasantly surprised to hear the request over the PA system about cheer for our team, don't boo the other team. And as a former hockey uh kid, I know parents sometimes are often the worst offenders. So it was good to hear that message. Is that message consistent across other activities and sports?
Yep, at each of our activities, uh that's read, or or either by our announcer or by student uh athlete, that might be there.
Yeah, it's great to know, because obviously football is probably the most well-attended sport we have, so.
Yep, we're expecting a nice crowd this Friday, so yep.
Very good. Uh dovetailing on the feedback or the fees discussion about us increasing the fees. Um not so much about the feedback on the need for the uh students, but has there been feedback in general about those increases? Through to your office or maybe finances reach, had any questions on that?
No, uh we we've had none other than asking, what are they? So that they can pay them or get them taken care of.
Great. And then the last thing, just a technical thing. Um you know, we get our packets the week before. It looks like your total numbers were a little bit different than ours for uh attendees. I don't know if you had an updated PDF. I was wondering if that could be updated for us. It showed five fifteen, we had five oh two.
I did update it uh to better reflect the actual numbers since last week. So, yes, I'm I'm happy to make sure you have that, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item C, we're going to welcome Lance Reaster with LMR Media, who will present an update on identifying pricing and selling advertising opportunities within the district. Also Director of Finance Val Murstorf will also present on two draft sponsorship agreements and a proposed extended contract with LMR Media. Welcome Lance and Val.
All right, thanks. This is uh, I do speak in front of thousands of people weekly, but not normally like this, so bear with me, um I especially not with notes. I'm normally just doing uh whatever's happening in front of us and some hitting some live reads, but uh here we go. Um I do own LMR Media, which stands for Local Marketing Results. And that is my mantra with how we run everything that we run. And there's a lot that we run. Uh the, all the businesses, including the Northfield School District, does know me as LMR Media. But a lot of the people also know me, and especially the general public knows me, that I own in this community, Northfield Live. Um that uh that's really become become very big in Northfield. And it's a, it's becoming a very expanding thing across all these high schools where we're just, we're adding high schools uh every year to our to our portfolio. Um and uh the Northfield Live, but oh, yeah, gotta run the slideshow, see? All right, perfect. She Jim told me that before and I forgot. Uh Northfield Live um is a, I think, a great partner with the, I'll get to LMR in a second, but I'm going to talk about uh Northfield Live for a second, because it's really awesome. If you guys don't know, we broadcasted last year, I think, around a hundred and fifty-one Northfield events. A lot of them are athletic events, but we do did a lot of our stuff. We did a couple of young people theater workshops. We do dance, we did weightlifting, which is a sport, uh but wasn't really covered before. Uh we do a lot of National Signing Day stuff. Um we uh did uh both a, we have historically done the Christmas choir concert and the spring choir concerts. Um we did track meet last year. We've done Ultimate Frisbee before, so it's not just your traditional uh, you know, core sports. Um but um back to LMR Media. Um that's why I I am here today to talk about marketing and uh potential um advertising s- uh space within your within the district and on the district property. Uh that came about a little bit a few years ago. I was talking with Mr. Dr. Hillman here. And uh we had noticed that the softball association had hung some signage on the backside of the JV fence facing Jefferson. And, you know, thanking their sponsors, which is great. Um and I think that came to a realization to both of us, and he knew me from a different other aspects uh with marketing stuff, and I was a board member of the NYABA. And how a lot of that uh can come in to be in a win-win for both the school district and our local businesses in the in our community here. And I provided a contract that at the time Merchants Bank had just signed with the NYABA for naming rights. And I just provided as an example of what maybe could be a possibility uh for the Northfield School District. And I think it was maybe a year or so later after that, we had another meeting and uh last uh couple of years, I've been working through the weeds, trying to come up with a good plan on how we want to move forward with this. Um we have done some things already, but am I doing, am I need to be moving slides? I probably do. Um uh as far as establishing these, some of these relationships uh with the school district. Let me look at my notes here, make sure I don't miss anything. Uh yeah, within, as far as uh when I was talking about the win-win for both the school district and the community uh businesses, I've definitely found, as I've been uh in bringing this to a lot of community members, they really, really enjoy this opportunity to want to do this. Um they see it as both a partnering, uh seeing as a community partner with the Northfield School District. They have uh no problems about uh doing more uh than what they currently have. Um and I bring it into a business plan for them, so they can realize it through other, you know, touch points and of course, the some uh primed real estate that you guys do have uh to utilize for advertising. And and when they, when we do that, um and we've got a couple of examples, um they they've actually talked themselves into wanting to do more than what they ever would have thought they would have done. Uh today, let's see, I gotta use the slide thing here. Uh these numbers here, these are some projected numbers that I've put together. They're fairly conservative numbers. Uh years one through five, there, um the numbers on that are would be would include purchasing screening for the varsity baseball and JV softball fields, along with a brand-new video scoreboard for Memorial Field, once, once we've decided on one. It hasn't even been picked out yet, so um yeah, but my projections would be uh to pay for any new video board within five years. It's a, and everybody that we've talked to about that and the price points, understand that, that that would be the the goal to uh pay for that scoreboard within five years. Uh then years six through ten, of course, uh once that scoreboard is paid off, um the numbers change drastically. In both of these numbers, uh the gymnasium isn't even included. You know, nothing happening at the other, I don't even think I put the new scorer's table in there, not that that's a huge number or anything, but into these numbers, so. Um they're a fairly conservative number. Um but then I um based on what would be sold out on the outside uh facilities, that I'll show you here in a second. Um uh these projection, uh these projections do not include like the gym, like I said, or anything that might come with uh reimagined board referendum. I did not project anything that would, that would be affected there also in whatsoever. Um we're also, uh I also would suggest within this that I put in there that we would want to stagger some of these bigger projects. The businesses have given me that feedback, especially recently when we had talked about how we would want to put these uh places and spaces up for bid, that they're like, hey, you know, we have budgets as well. Um so please don't do them all in one year. Um so that's, that's some other things that we'll have to get through. Um and that we would want to do those projects, both uh um correctly uh and done right, just not, not just, not just quickly. That's what we're really working for here. LMR, back to local marketing results. It's uh, I mean, we are an advertising agency. We do a lot of stuff, but I also see us as a partner with this. Uh like I said, I've been a, I was a longtime NYBA board member. I know the type of work that it takes to um put up signage and screening and stuff like that and and uh and I do not think that the school wants this to look like we just want to order some signs, have somebody print them up and we put them up there and next week they're drooping, or they're, within a year, they're getting faded. So we've put a lot of due diligence into what we're proposing to do, and I got some graphics here to show you. Let's see, so we are looking for a five-year agreement instead of an annual agreement. Some of that is due to uh on the uh Memorial Field and the varsity baseball field, I'm asking our clients to pay uh for those signs in a five-year agreement and pay it upfront. Um and then we would also be on part of the responsibility of keeping those signs in good condition. I don't, I do not, with anything that we're planning, I've had talks with the grounds crew and staff. I do not expect that those gentlemen don't be able to always be everywhere and keep the signage in the school, so the signage looking good. And so I know that we're gonna have to be a part of that, uh both the signage that goes up annually and be taken down. Um you know, um in the spring and in the fall. Um so it it definitely needs a lot of extra supervision, uh and we expect to be a a part of that. Um so because of that, we have changed the scope a little bit about, I think, what Matt and I initially thought of some signs on the backside of the JV field to a much more bigger plan of what the facilities could look like. And the the business partners appreciate that, because then they can see some ROI possibilities out of this and really be proud of where their sign is hanging. Um with every client, we do provide mockups for every single client, and we have some mockups for you for you here today. Am I keeping up with the tabs? Um uh we we course want to uh help, help the the Northfield School District with monetization of the space, but also beautification of the facilities and really uh really help along with that. We've already identified a lot of locations with for potential advertisers, including the one on the screen here. Um uh we've uh helped to determine uh size and potential ad spots, including dimensions and ability to withstand the weather and the wind load of a lot of um fences and et cetera. Uh we've consulted with uh multiple vendors regarding outdoor elements. Uh we've consulted with the school district grounds crew on feasibility of a lot of this stuff and also understanding what they currently do as like the softball field does have a batter's eye and who puts that up and when taken down, et cetera. Um we've considered both year-round and seasonal signage. Um we've uh due uh done due diligence on current facilities to understand what needs upgrading before signage can be applied or sold, such as the dugouts on the baseball field and the softball fields. There needs to be some touch pointing done. Um and the, those numbers previously do, did take that into factor too, by the way, is the school's cost, so. Um we've created a pricing str- uh structure based on data research and analysis, including location, visibility, proximity to traffic. We've done uh, we've grabbed some MINDOT traffic counts for clients. Of course, I said weather, weather and wind, the size of the signage, uh cost of that signage. Um cost of, we've taken into consideration cost of other signage, such as billboards out on Highway Three. Um and will the sta- the signage stay up continuously or need to be put up or taken down? And then, uh like I said, the the mockups. Um so this on the screen here is a example of um NCC builders has um is interested in signing an agreement with the Northfield School District. The uh press box is, box definitely needs some repairs. The windows are in terrible condition. Um it's very hard to see out of them at all. Uh they're, the the seals on them are failed, and so they're all foggy in between the panes. Um there's been some uh water drainage issues there coming from the roof that where it comes down in between a couple of the windows. So there's been some rotting going on, and uh they they already did a little bit of some uh quick repair on the floor. Um and the, there's just a lot of other, the list is long that needs to be done there. And NCC Builders has expressed interest in coming on and um And NCC Builders has expressed interest in coming on and um working through an agreement to get that stuff uh taken care of and. Becoming the naming rights of the, the press box. Here's a, an example of some signage, this is obviously the football field, Memorial Field. Um the signage here is uh screening, so it'd be put up in the spring, taken down in the fall. That is the visitor's sideline that you're looking at, so the home fans would be looking at it. Um those are, that are on a four-foot fence, that is not the Ivy fence. That's a, a four-foot fence that goes around there and that only goes up to the far end of the visitor's sideline. So those are all, well, they're. We sell it as a four-foot by twenty-six-foot long sign, but it technically be like three-foot eight-high. So that way mowers could be able to maintain underneath it, it wouldn't be dragging on the ground. Uh this is a varsity baseball field facing Highway two forty-six. I have, I tell all the clients, I haven't decided if these signs are gonna be four-foot eight or five-foot ten yet, or five-by-ten yet. But they would be aluminum uh signage with vinyl over aluminum. Um and they would be expected to be up year-round. The reason I haven't decided on the size is those posts are not evenly ten feet apart. So we have to decide whether we want to center them in each space or just butt them up similar to what's on there, on there. This is also the varsity baseball field mocked up for Community Resource Bank, cause they're currently on the scoreboard here. Again, we would like to do the, some tuck pointing repair on these dugouts, it needs done anyway before we do any work to them. Um and then the plan would be to paint these, uh that way they could be easily maintained if they are um tagged with graffiti or anything like that. And keep them in good shape without having to invite an artist back out. Here's uh the JV softball field mocked up. And here's a, uh the sign facing uh Jefferson Parkway on the JV field, this is also. The fence that initially started a lot of this conversation where the softball association does hang their banners. And this is the varsity softball field, I think these will be five-by-ten. Uh these face in would also be alumina- vinyl over aluminum and be uh stay up year-round. And there's also the, that's the varsity dugout of the uh softball field and an example of what some screening would look like. There uh to help complete the look of that field. And there will also be some, both on the Northfield baseball field and the uh softball fields, there'll also be some branding. Um that would be expected to happen, so Northfield School District branding um in other spaces. But for lack of time and number of slides, we kept it at this one. I think that's it. I'm expecting a bunch of questions.
Thanks Lance, you might get a few here. I'm gonna start with one quick one, what's your middle initial?
Uh it is E.
I always thought LMM was just your.
Yeah, yep, nope.
Tricked me. Alright, we'll open up to others, Ben, you had a question, so.
Sure, yeah, thanks Lance, I really appreciate the Northfield Live service that you offer, that's great that we can bring a lot of those events to people that can't be there.
Yeah, really nice.
I just wanted a couple, maybe a couple of questions for you, but a couple of questions for Dr. Hillman or just observations for the board. One, we just updated policy eight oh nine dot one sponsorship of school district-owned property last May. So I think a lot of sort of the, yeah, a lot of what can be part of advertising is defined in that policy, correct? One of the questions, I just pulled that up and looked at it quickly, it said all revenue from granting and sponsorship must be used according to a plan specified by the board. So with regards and Lance is where you can jump in, if you go back to your slide that talked about just the amounts, I think it was like two hundred thousand dollars a year. One through four or five. Is that total over that five-year period, is that, or per, or per year?
That would be a total over that five-year, um the initials I, some numbers I had ran initially would be as if it were all sold out immediately. Which obviously isn't the case, um and we have some very big, you know, things to, to tackle here. The scoreboard being the, probably the biggest one, um but uh um. So that's a fluid-ish number, but I think a very achievable number in years one through five from now.
It's a seven oh five, six through ten, then additives would be like five hundred thousand years, six through ten, you know what I mean? Or is that a, additional seven hundred?
That'd be an additional.
That you're, okay.
Yeah.
And what, maybe you mentioned it, but I don't, I, I missed it, what was the estimated price of a new scoreboard, do we know that?
Uh I think we were going on a, I could give it a four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so it's gonna be about half of that over that.
Uh yeah, that would, that would be paid off in that, yeah, you would, you would be able to pay that off and by screening for these fields and still make two hundred. In years one through five.
That's a good call out, I appreciate that clarification, so that's in addition to the bullet pointed.
Yes.
And then I think you answered one of the questions that I had too was, the with the screening is part of sort of what comes along with this plan. Some of the, the Raiders branded screening.
Yeah, like the Raiders branded screening, yes, um yeah, definitely, you know, this is a, you can see the maroon behind the screen here. But it's not in the outfield fence, um some of this stuff I haven't completely worked through how we're gonna execute it. But again, the numbers are very conservative, but in this case, that maroon screening, I have planned to be on the inside of the field. So the aluminum sides would be on, go ahead. To the softball field, yeah.
Are a lot of those, I don't have it committed to memory, but are a lot of those fences currently on the screen, there's nothing on them right now.
No, the softball field for sure has a screen and varsity baseball, I'm trying to remember now, I don't think so, yeah.
No, there's one on the varsity softball, you can see the end of the Raiders here, but it doesn't go all the way to the corner. On, in either right or left field, um right where that Northfield Insurance Agency sign starts is about where your current screening eh ends. And uh so my proposal would be, in this case, the screening would be right behind the signs on this side. And we would probably have to take it out and replace it like every five years or something. Uh but on the baseball field, the screening would be on the opposite side of the fence. To be able to provide a good backdrop for those signs, so it does look good. Um and completes the, the look for the field as well, cause the, the players and everybody on, on the field doesn't want to be looking at the backside of signage. Uh so it really, and it, that would say home of Raider baseball or um I would work through that with Mr. Mahal.
Right, quick question, you got it, okay.
Uh let's try someone else for a moment, if you don't mind. Run a tight ship, what do you want for me? Amy?
Uh first of all, it's, it's, um I'm happy to see after hearing regularly from. Uh uh residents, you know, why don't you find some other source of money in, that we're actually finding some other source of money? So that's a good thing, but I do have some questions um about, well first, um just kind of comment on the. Press box mockup you did.
Yeah.
On slide six, I believe, um. That one, I, I know traditionally the Northfield Raiders has been on the bottom part of the press box, but when I see this mockup. It makes me feel like we're at the NCC Builders Field and not, and so it seems to like the two signs should switch position. If we're gonna have a sign up above, um because that seems to be where, the placement where that's saying the name of the field, to me. It's something to think about.
That's something we're definitely taking into consideration, I think, um and to be totally honest, we are not sure. NCC Builders is also not sure how that sign would be executed. We talk a lot about, uh not a lot, maybe that would be an exaggeration, but it definitely comes up in each meeting we have. Um because that, that current railing up there, uh I'm pretty confident would not be able to withstand a wind load of a solid sign. That is portrayed like this, um but that's why we have a contractor in the mix here, um and a really good one. But um yeah, I don't know that there, I, I mean, we could definitely bring that up to them, uh this is by no means.
These are examples.
These are absolute examples.
Dan, I just wanted to mention it now, because when I, when I see it, I think, oh, we're at NCC Builders Field and not at Northfield Raiders Field. So just something to think about as you design it, but in a similar fashion, I, I look at all of the different. Um signs along the fields that you presenting and I know they're just, right now, they're just logos.
Right.
Um but I'm wondering, I mean, there might be people who want to say more than logos or there might be. Uh some, some other message that the people want to get out and I'm wondering if um you're planning to create any sort of. A style manual for the ads, so there's some consistency and not a hodgepodge of. Different images assaulting people.
Yep, we, we have fixed so many companies' logos in this town, I couldn't even tell you a number. Um but, but not in the way that you might be thinking, um are you asking about uh one? Some venues choose to have all company logos in their, their school colors as an example, or their team colors, is that what you're?
That, that's not necessarily what I'm asking, I'm not opposed to that, but I just want to keep whatever the final product is. To be pleasing to look at.
Yep.
Um so, and not distracting to the players or if people are taking photographs to, you know, everybody's looking at the background. More than the players, wha- whatever, just something that it looks nice, gets the message across, but doesn't. Completely draw all the attention.
Yep, it is a fine line. I have uh really spent a lot of time. I have hundreds of pictures on my phone now from all the fields that we've gone to over the last several years about this. Uh this, especially the aluminum vinyl over aluminum signage, um I have just determined I like the best. Um and utilizing the company's logos and their colors, also I have determined I like, it gives the field's character. And it also, it does add to the point of why these companies want to do it, they want to be a community partner, but it's their branding and it is their logo. The fields, and we've been to some and we've talked with the people that have done the, the fundraising around where they do go with all team colors. And a lot of businesses choose not to participate because of that, which, you know, it's tough, cause they want to be a community partner, but, you know. Um and so maybe they give a lesser amount, I don't know, and in another way and then choose not to do the, the bigger sign. I mean, this is an example, this, this, these signs right here, those companies are, um nobody's signed anything, but nobody's also, nobody's flinched. Uh those would be twelve hundred dollars a year, uh five-year agreements, they'd be paid six thousand dollars upfront to hang a sign on that fence.
And right now, the mockup is just the logos, but what if they wanted to start saying go Raiders? Or, you know, Witt Brothers supports the Raiders, you know, road team.
I mean, I think a good example would be the Ice Arena, which for the record is owned by the city.
Yeah.
Uh where they have the billboards that have all the taglines, captions of come on by after the game, that, those type of messages. So you'd like to see some consistency in that, if we were having uh an avenue that had more space than what you're presenting here, is that fair?
That's exactly, I just, well, I just wanted to look nice.
Yeah, for the most part, um we do keep it very sweet, encourage them to keep it very simple. We don't ask them to put their phone numbers or their websites or anything on it, everybody on the streets going by at about thirty mile an hour unless you're walking. Um and uh I've also, we've also learned that phone numbers, whether they're in an ad, whether it's video or audio. Or visual, it doesn't work, it's, it's about branding and so it's about putting your name on it and getting your, your brand and your logo recognized. If they want to say go Raiders, um I guess we haven't anybody talked about that on this type of signage. Um we definitely have a lot of ads that play in Northfield Live that say that. Um but uh, no, I think everybody, so far, everybody has been like, no, they wanted to stick very clean into their logo.
Amy, do you have any more questions?
So I guess what I'm hearing is no style manual, which was my initial question, or no style guide, just do it as it comes.
Um, we could look at, um that's definitely, that is not my bailiwick. My ad director, that is her bailiwick, the style, style guide stuff. When we looked at the Northfield School District style guide and we're talking through stuff with the scorer's table, um that is her bailiwick a hundred percent. Uh the, and so I guess I'm speaking to what uh she's, the information she's provided me about how we would do this and with the clients and. That's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Rob, you had a question?
I have uh two questions, the first one is, let's say you have a company like professional drive dental. And they sign a contract and then they suddenly become just prevent, professional dentals, so is that? So name changes like that, do they get worked into the contract and how do you deal with that?
One hundred percent they do, we have definitely learned that uh, uh one, we just, we, we knew we wanted to put that into the language anyway. But I had learned some of that stuff from being on the NYBA board, um as per your example, if a company does rebrand, it's on them. Uh if they want to change their sign, it's on them to buy the new sign.
And then my other question is, these are all on uh athletic fields, have you thought about other areas in the school district that? Might be areas where you would consider this sort of sponsorship?
We have walked, we have, uh Mahal and I have walked the fields and identified a lot of spaces and talked through a lot of stuff, a lot of that is fluid. Uh especially in the, in the, around the gym. Um the outside fields, again, the, the clients have asked us not to do everything at once. Um they want to be everywhere and they do want to support everything, we just have to start somewhere. Um and the, actually the JV softball field will probably be one of the eat, the first ones, just cause it's such a lower hanging fruit. Um uh but yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we've done so far.
Okay, I mean, there are things like, I don't know, playgrounds or something in an elementary school, so that aren't in the category of. JV or varsity athletics.
Right.
Just wondering if anything in that.
And I think that uh what I would say is, first of all, I really appreciate Amy's question or Amy's comment about um our thought about how we are able to. Find additional revenue sources, uh we take the comments and the feedback from the community and the board seriously. And we've worked with Lance um to be able to think about this first phase of it. And what really happened, how I would describe our relationship with Lance in this particular piece is there was a lot of diligence and working and find. And now all of a sudden we're there and we have a, quite a few projects that are ready to go. So I think, Rob, what we do is we get those initial projects where we think have the greatest opportunity for the most significant return on investment. If you think about the places where the most people come to, they're gonna be our football field, right? They're gonna be the gymnasium, which someone we're talking about next, um you think about baseball, not just during the varsity season, but also. Other groups that come in, fall baseball, Legion base, all, all these other groups that come and play. So we're starting there with the places where we think the most eyes have the opportunity to get us the quickest return on that initial upfront investment. Then thinking, again, I also appreciate eight oh nine point one being brought up, um because now we can start looking at other kinds of things, like you said. Playgrounds are, could be a place where that could happen. Um as we, I wish playgrounds were used outside of school time much more than uh they are. But another question we have to be really thoughtful about is there will be a line, right? There will be a line here of where is too far, right, to um use this advertising, I mean, people on the board know that I have had. An evolution in my thinking about this um over a long period of time. So I, I think what we're talking about right now is a great first iteration. And if we are able to, when, not if, when we are able to realize this and we execute some of these things that are. What I would say is seven, eight spake, they're very close, right, to being finished, we get those things completed, then we can look at what the next layer is. Right now, what we're proposing to are things that I'm very comfortable with from an advertising perspective. Then as a board, we're gonna have to have a discussion about what is the next layer of advertising. So by way of example, we could get to the point of thinking about having particular pieces of equipment. That are in science classrooms sponsored in some way, shape or form to how, to reduce the cost of that equipment to the district. We're not to that point yet, but I'm saying that those are the kinds of things that we need to be thoughtful about is, at what point do we say, okay, the advertising line stops here?
Right.
Right now, we're very comfortable with what we are, um they are all public areas where the general public comes, it's a, uh. People, people are used to seeing that kind of advertising and marketing to them, so. Phase, I would consider this to be kind of phase one with, I would say, two or three more iterations potentially coming down the line.
Yeah.
I also want to emphasize that there are things, are, the, the spaces that we're talking about are places where the public sees regularly. Right, these are things that many community members interact with and yet some of the equipment is incredibly expensive. Scoreboard, for example, and is used a couple dozen times a year, right?
Right.
Twenty-four to, you know, a, a varsity memorial field scoreboard would be used for ten home football games between varsity and JV. You'd be talking about lacrosse, you're talking about soccer, but there's a significant expense to upgrading and having a, a scoreboard that can also double as an advertising. Board as well, and to be able to cover that cost without using the general fund is huge, right? It allows us to do some of those up. And to be able to cover that cost without using the general fund is huge, right? It allows us to do some of those upgrades of those community spaces in a way that leverages other dollars than the school district's general fund. And so this is how you start to see the flywheel again, starting to turn on using those resources to better the district, to give us more curb appeal, if you will, in some ways. And as well as to one of the points that was brought up about the board directing the use of those funds. We've, we don't even have a contract yet with them, but we're hoping to get one of these in the next, at the next meeting to finalize the NCC and another contract for the scorers table that we're bringing up. But to begin with, it's very low level entry. And then as part of our annual budget discussions, that is how we would look at, how would you want that advertising revenue directed beyond what it paid for in terms of infrastructure?
I haven't seen any other hands go up, so we'll go back to Ben.
Thanks, Cory. Yeah, Matt, you raised a few of the questions that I think I still had, and that was, so you see the budgeting processes, that plan is specified by the policy. I was just curious what you, what the mechanism you were thinking of that we would use.
So I think, again, this was a 20-minute presentation that's culminating at least a year's worth of meetings regularly, and it's all kind of coming together, like Dr. Hillman said. And so what I'm envisioning is like we're dipping our toe in and we can start to build that. I envision the first part being like a separate meeting with the board or at a board meeting to say, here's some ideas we have. What's the level of interest? But the formal, this is the budget process and approving the budget, here's the dollars that are in it. We're saving the rest for XYZ. That would be kind of the annual ongoing, but this initial, I envision some more intentional conversation about what it looks like, but we we're just there. So.
Yeah, no, I appreciate cart horse, right? We gotta get those things in order. You have to have the money in order to have the plan, but just contractually and just looking through the contract and then how that sort of meshes with the policy, you know, in terms of both kind of accepting an advertiser and then terminating, do we, that's still the discretion of the district based on the policy, correct?
Correct.
The service we would be engaged here is Lance, you going out and finding those entities, but you would still bring those to Dr. Hillman and Val, I think the way that the policy is written for anything that's less than 25,000.
Yeah.
Based on that sponsorship. Okay.
Yep. All the contracts would be signed by myself or Dr. Hillman or brought to the board.
And then an unrelated, well, related, but different active question, just in covering some of those fences on the fields. Any security concerns, you know, just in terms of reducing visibility in some of those spaces? I don't know if that's something we've thought about or looked at, but you know, it's not, I just just ask the question.
Yeah, as someone who's been looking at security and safety for quite some time, I haven't heard that kind of concern brought up at this point, something we can certainly connect with law enforcement about. But thinking about those outside venues, I, I don't have the same kind of concern that I have, might have in some other areas. But we can certainly talk with law enforcement. We've done that in a number of times in the past where we've talked with the chief of police about some of these kinds of ideas and what suggestions that they have to make it a win-win. So we've talked more about, actually, we've talked more about how would the screening impact the fan experience, right?
We definitely talked about that.
So those are the kinds of things. We certainly can talk with law enforcement about what their suggestions would be in circumstances like this. Nothing, no conversations that I've had with them would suggest they would have an issue with this.
Jeff, for Jenny, comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and your work on, on Northfield Live. You said 151 events. Was that last year?
Yeah, that was just in the, yeah, it would have probably officially ended in July at the end of the Legion baseball season. I think we counted the Legion games.
Very good. Good job doing that. Is there also a way, I mean, I watch Northfield Live, but I mean, would I need casting on my phone or something to get that to my TV or how, can you do something with YouTube or what, what do you, how do you get your?
Yes, I just dropped a bunch of money on that. We do expect to be developing some apps. So it'd be on your Roku, your Apple TV and all that stuff, Firestick stuff. So I'm a little conflicted about it. I actually fought it more than, a lot of people have been asking for that. But I wanted to really direct the traffic to northfieldlive.com because of the click-through advertising that is on there to make sure that that the viewers were seeing the, the businesses that were supporting this is very important to me. And providing the analytics of that is very important to me, to those advertisers. Because as I've found, as we've developed this stuff, both for the school and Northfield Live, the better we are, the better product that we put out that can provide analytics, the more they're willing to do. We have a, we have a client this year. He's a great guy, a great business partner. He is now donating money to the school district. He, he, he came on right away, but he was, he was very typical. He was like, oh, can I just advertise during football? And I said, no, if you're going to advertise with me, you're in everything. And I don't care if there's only 10 IP addresses watching whatever soccer game, we're going to be there and we're going to do it under the best of our abilities. And he was fine. He's like, okay. And now what, I forget what, what he's donating to. I apologize, but.
The Community Ed Scholarship Fund.
So we do a live read for every goal scored in soccer and every touchdown scored in football. He's donating $25 to those. And it is Kevin Rogers from Northfield Insurance Agency. I should not name him. But to your point to.
John, I mean, just instead of watching on the TV, I mean, on the computer, I got a big TV sitting there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, we are, I have okayed, and I wrote the check to, for us to switch away from probably the schools platform a little bit and how we broadcast to our own private one where we develop all those apps.
You could even be casting on a phone. I'm sure there's probably something simple that I'm not doing that I can.
Yeah.
I can help you. I've got, I've got, I've got tech for that. If I can just, while Jeff brought up Northfield Live, I think it's an appropriate time. I, I think we just need to honor the work that Lance has done on Northfield Live. Not just for broadcasting 151 events, graduation, all sorts of things, but we talk about career and technical education. And in the superintendent focus areas that I'm going to ask you to approve later this evening, one of those is about really creating this alternate for credit, the school, the work that we talked about. And one of the impetuses for bringing that back was Lance. Because if you go to any of the events that Northfield Live is broadcasting, you will see a team of students doing the engineering, the camera work. They are often commenting on the game. And this is a really important potential career pathway. And so it was Shane Byer and I at an event that Lance was broadcasting, we're saying, how come these kids can't get credit for doing this, right? And that launched the point that we got to the focus area tonight. Learning just doesn't happen between the first spell and the last spell of the day. And the skills that students are learning, doing a live event with a little bit of pressure, right, safe pressure is something that is really valuable. So aside from the LMR contract, thinking about what Northfield Live has not done, just done for grandparents, for people who live across the country, people who you will watch at our games, watching three screens, right? They're watching, they're at one of our games live, they're watching the other kid on the road, you know, through one of Lance's partners. And just the way that it has provided this service for families is amazing. And he's done it by providing opportunities for students to learn this really, an industry that is just only beginning to open up. I think we think we know what we know about streaming, but I don't think we even have any clue of where it's going. And so there is no way in the past with the previous legacy broadcasting technology that as many students who are getting that real experience could get it without the work. And Lance doesn't have to do it. He could just say, hey, I'm going to have some adults do it. It's the easiest course of action, less risk of failure. But he has stepped forward to do that. And just, so Jeff, thanks for bringing up the Northfield Live piece again, because we just really owe Lance a debt of thanks for the opportunities he's given students to develop their skills.
In Northfield School District, you are at the forefront of this, both with the LMR stuff and the broadcasting. Other schools have reached out to me. If you didn't know, we've now added, under my direction, Faribault and Albert Lee because of how Northfield School District has been operating, the stories, I could write a book about it already. I try not to cry when I talk about it. This is, I tell the, the staff, I'm like, this has got to be how teachers feel. It's, it's amazing. And I really appreciate the support.
Well, I appreciate the commitment you've made to us and the work that you've done with the administration over the last couple of years to kind of have this proof of concept. And it's great for us to support a local business. I am certainly comfortable with the contract and how it's framed out. I think it's low risk and certainly a lot of opportunities. So I look forward to voting for this in two weeks.
There, there was one correction in the contract. There was something about objections versus objectives that has been fixed. So board member brought that up. We've got that part typo that has been corrected.
Yep. And I just wanted to clarify the agenda said two contracts for sponsorship and there's just one. It's just for the press box.
Been looking for it. I couldn't find it.
Yep, it was just for the press box. But I wanted to take the opportunity, just with the timing of everything, to have Lance come and present to kind of show the exciting opportunities that we're considering and to make sure that the board's up to date and understands. Just for clarity and some detail on the contract for the press box. The, the work would be donated. It would basically offset their first couple of years worth of, I think it's $5,000 a year. And so they would not have to pay anything for the first couple of years up to whatever that dollar amount of the donated material and labor was. So again, it's an exciting way to look at stewardship in a different manner, to be able to get some great things done for the district. And I just want, I'll answer any questions you have about the contracts, but I just wanted to thank Lance. He's done a great job of helping us envision this as an opportunity to really improve and update our facilities in a way that I would say exemplifies our strategic commitment to stewardship and partnerships.
All right. Thank you, Lance.
Yeah, thanks.
And Val, do you have additional comments about either of the contracts for board members who have reviewed it before coming to the meeting?
So I was just gonna comment that on the NCC builder, the 5.1 to your question, has the partner rebranding where it clearly lays out that they would be responsible for any cost. And then there's another section that says we will try and keep it in good repair. And if, you know, if we break it, we'll fix it and keep it looking good for the amount that they're going to contribute for that. And this is our first like real draft contract of this, so please feel free to provide feedback. We tried to cover all of the things we could think of. We do have a first right of refusal. So you have it for five years and we'll come back to you first because your sign's already on it. And if you want to re-up, you'll have the first right to do that. And if you don't, then we can go on to the next person who wants to advertise. So that's kind of the, the theme of the agreement, but I think it's, again, an exciting opportunity and we're dipping our toes in.
You want to open the questions for that one specifically?
Sure. Yeah.
Amy?
Have we run the contract by a lawyer or do we need to? Or are you confident in it?
Um, yes, we did run it past a lawyer. And they didn't have any, anything super concerning. They, you know, want to add a bunch of extra words that may or may not be super necessary, but overall they were comfortable with it. We did pick and choose a lot of the language off other contracts from districts that have done similar things like this.
I have a question, and this could be either for you, Val, or Lance. Thanks for sticking around. I know Amy had a question about the placement of that potential sponsor being at the top versus being at the bottom. If for some reason we want to move ahead with it being on the bottom, I'm guessing that would have some effect on the value of that placement. Is that fair to say? Or should I not say that?
I'm not sure. They, I mean, they definitely want to come as a community partner. And that's almost been, I mean, as we've definitely talked about that sign up there or how to put their name on it in some way, and it is priced little bit like a billboard, where it is priced at $5,000 a year. So whereas the billboard out on Highway 3 is right around $7,000 a year. So, but it doesn't have near the traffic count that Highway 3 provides. But it's a much more romantic relationship because you're walking right up to it, you're at a sporting event. And it has a relationship with the school board. So there's definitely some, or the school district, so it has some value there. I have not, we have not, it's not even crossed our mind, I guess, to flip them that I thought of.
And I'm not suggesting I'm necessarily in favor of that, but I did want to ask that since one board member did question that I didn't know if that would affect some.
Yeah, we can certainly look into it. It's, again, we're dipping our toe in, so we'll, we'll find out how they feel about it. Nothing's been quite set in stone yet.
And I think we were at a point where we felt it was appropriate for us to come and share the progress with you, right? But there are pieces to be determined yet because there isn't a real template for this. There's not a lot of other examples similarly. So there is a little bit of, you're seeing a little bit more of work in progress than maybe the board usually sees at a formal presentation. But we were far enough where we felt we needed to make sure that we shared it with you and the community to know what the process is, where, where we're at to generate additional interest. And so there are going to be a few more things than normal where we say almost there, but not quite. And so there is some opportunity at this late stage for us to be able to polish. And of course, Lance is what's next kind of guy too. So we do the first one, we say, what did we learn from it? How do we do the next one? And so I, I can assure you that you'll see contract over contract improvement in how we approach it.
100%.
Do board members have other questions about the press box contract? All right, Val, you want to talk about the LMR contract?
Um, absolutely. So I would say, again, we asked Lance to, to go through, but this has really blossomed from, let's put some signs up on a fence and maybe generate a little additional money for the district to really this comprehensive idea that can really has the potential to not only generate funds, but also replace and update important things in the district without dipping into the general fund. And so this particular contract, again, while it's similar to the prior one, there's much more detail about the, I would say, the level of due diligence that, that he is going through. And I, the 5% increase, we've talked a lot about. And for me, not having to do all of the extra is worth the 5%. He is an expert in his field and I trust his judgment on that. And he's bringing stuff we meet monthly with John Mahal and Lance and myself, just to kind of keep everything moving and touching base and making sure we're on the same page. But the level of detail and commitment that he's put into organizing this is really worth the contract, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Val. Any questions from board members? Rob?
I actually have a question about the NCC contract again. This is a contract for the advertising. So the actual work that's done on it, I mean, is there, there's going to be a contract that determines what the actual cost is for doing the work so that you can determine that $5,000 or cost of materials or whatever?
Yep. So we kind of included the language in the first five year that we would net the difference, but there would be an explicit statement of work of what we were expecting. Some of that was, I think, listed in here, if I'm remembering correctly, about the windows and yeah, we, they agreed to remodel. Including, but not limited to, because the siding and windows were kind of the big thing that we'd been talking about, but there would be a statement of work that we would agree to. And then the requirement is that they provide us a, a list of the donated amounts and values because we have to book that as a district, as assets in-kind donated assets, but making sure that we keep that up to date on our records as well.
Okay. Others? Ben?
Sorry, I'll just wait. Now that we've had time to marinate it in a little bit, I would weigh into, I think I support Amy's comment, you know, just think about the placement, what makes sense. So it's clear, you know, kind of what the Raiders kind of versus the NCC builders, we would, whatever aesthetically makes the most sense, but to me, to flip the two kind of does.
Yeah. If I could speak to it really quick, as I've marinated on as well, I know right now in that it looks very, very almost intrusive, maybe, or very, I honestly think once we put a new video board and we do that air signage on that fence, it's not going to look out of place. And there's, John has done a great job always keeping me in line with, hey, we need to be doing Northfield Raider branding as well here. That's why there's a lot of other signage and possibly on the ends of those things. I understand looking at it the way we have proposed, it looks like it, it is very big. But yeah, it's, I don't think in a few years, I don't think it's going to. But, uh, yeah, it's, I don't think in a few years, I don't think it's gonna look like that with the, the stuff that is in my head that, um, I hope to be presenting to you guys.
What I'm hearing is we have a very cropped image of one space.
Right.
The totality of the field.
Yes.
Won't look out of place, which I agree with, I think. Other comments?
Wait until you see the scoreboard.
All right. Well, thank you, Lance. Thank you, Val.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item D, our final item for discussion tonight is a fall 2024 bond referendum update from Dr. Hillman, who will catch us up on recent and future events, informing the public about this board-supported initiative.
Thanks, Corey. So just, uh, as been typical, I've been giving you a report at every board meeting about what's been happening in the last couple of weeks, what's coming up related to our educational campaign for the community. Uh, I wanna give you an update on the visits to the tax impact website. As you know, Ellers has the tax impact calculator that is available and we're getting regular data from Ellers now. So as of the 6th of September, we now have had 245 total website calculations. That means that people have gone to the website, calculated 245 different properties for their individual tax impact. That's made up of 20 commercial requests and 225 residential requests. And then there's still, as of now, I reported the same number at the last meeting. There's only been one individualized agriculture request. And just for people watching, to remind folks that, um, if you own agriculture property and you'd like to have the estimate about what the bond reference tax impact would be on your property, there's directions on the website, how to contact Ellers. They do some work to specifically give you a customized, uh, tax impact report just based on the, um, distribution of your property across tax rates. Um, this, as of Wednesday of this week, we will reach a 70 referendum-related events with, um, our presentation to the Spring Creek, uh, parent teacher organization. Today, we presented, uh, at the, uh, Northfield Area Retired Educators, some really great questions. I wanna thank Amy for attending that presentation. I think really good questions, really a good engagement from that group of area retired educators. Um, as of now, on the schedule, we have six Northfield High School tours remaining. Uh, September 14th, this Saturday is the next tour from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The 16th, next Monday, 4 to 6 PM, of course, board members invited to join me for those tours. We've also scheduled several new events, uh, just in the last few days. So in our, uh, no stone unturned approach to educating the public, I'm gonna be tabling at something I never thought I'd be tabling at, but we'll have a table at the community education flag football evening. So, uh, Aaron Bailey said that's a great area, lots of, of parents of young children. So we'll use our tabling approach there like we've used at some other, uh, events. Uh, we also have scheduled, um, this is somebody that had come from an idea from the board. So we are, we just scheduled it, uh, we will be getting it started to be promoted tomorrow, September 19th. We are gonna be able to do the side-by-side NCEC and Greenville Park Building Tour. So it's not a perfect analogy for what we're talking about before and after with what is envisioned with the high school bond referendum, but it is able to give people an idea of what the differences would be between the existing building and what is being proposed in terms of natural light, in terms of academic flexibility. So we will start, um, I believe it's at 5:30, all right, at 5:30, we will start at the NCEC. We'll tour the NCEC briefly, then we'll move to the new Greenville Park Building. And part of the tour will be our description of while it's not perfect, it is a scalable analogy to what we're talking about. So again, we just finalized, finding a date to be able to do that one was a little tricky. Um, so thanks to Anita for her puzzle work, um, because we found a date that did work. Uh, we also have on September 19th, we have the District Youth Council Forum scheduled. Right now, we understand that's gonna be in the morning during first period. October 8th and 22nd, this is important for board members. Uh, I would hope that all could attend these meetings. These are public meeting Q and As. So in a typical, the way we typically would have done this in the past, around this time, we would have had the one public meeting that most districts have. We already held that similar style public meeting back in the winter before you voted of what pathway to take. So we've scheduled two 75-minute public meetings, October 8th and October 22nd, both at the, um, Northfield High School Auditorium. We'll get you the times, uh, as well very quickly here. But those are really intended to be a, a shorter version of our typical presentation and then being able to, uh, have a Q and A and answer questions, seven o'clock, seven o'clock. So that we're just, we're just getting these scheduled. Again, it's another way for people to be able to come. Maybe it's people who've been on a tour, wanna ask more questions, might be people who have not taken a tour, but have questions or opinions that they want to share. So again, it's more of a traditional Q and A kind of thing. We won't be doing breakout sessions, but it's the more typical piece. Rather than doing a couple of hours, we said we do two 75-minute, uh, sessions. And so, um, you are all invited to attend those. I'll do the presentation. Um, I'll, we'll, we'll do the standard Q and A that we've done with the public, uh, in the past, but we're just finalizing those. We're getting those published this week. And then finally, um, I just wanna take a moment to also, uh, reiterate our thanks to Carlton College for their $2 million pledge, uh, toward the facility improvements that are included in question one. Just to be really clear, um, that pledge, uh, will help reduce the cost of those facility improvements to the taxpayer if question one passes. So if question one passes, what that means, we'd reduce the amount of bonds that we would sell by $2 million. It's a really unique milestone and a substantial affirmation of the school district with a pledge. Let's just really think about it, a pledge by a private college in public education. That is awesome. It is a fantastic statement of affirmation for public education, uh, in Northfield. Um, we looked, we, we are very confident saying that this is the first pledge of its kind in Minnesota. I asked, uh, one of our resident researchers, Dr. Hardy, to assist me with that. We are very, very confident it's the first pledge of its kind in Minnesota. And we've also found it's actually quite unique throughout the country. In the Northeast, it's more common to see smaller private colleges or even larger private colleges making donations to specific items in their city. But to see a school construction, potential school construction project, that is unusual. And so it's not, it's, there, there are some examples of it, but we are certainly among that first wave of this kind of investment by a private college and a public school across the country. And I just wanna thank President Allison Byerly and, uh, her team. Um, I'll tell you that Allison Byerly is the real deal. She is a visionary leader. She is courageous and she is community-minded, the kinds of things that we wanna see in our college partner. So I just have the utmost admiration for, uh, President Byerly and her team and how they worked from ideation to completion of this, uh, this particular pledge. We had a full house for our announcement on August 30th. We wanna thank Lance. Lance streamed it on Northfield Live. You can watch the recording of that on Northfield Live. Some great speakers. Just really a great event to, to celebrate the, the pledge of this in this very unique circumstance. So, uh, just kudos to Carlton College and their commitment to the community. So that's the report for this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start. Uh, do you know if the flag football event will be on Northfield Live?
I.
I'd ask Lance.
I, I looked at the schedule. I do not see the, but I will tell you, that is the kind of thing he would do.
All right, very good. Uh, questions for Dr. Hillman? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. All right, we're gonna move to the consent agenda, uh, for the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there'll be some personnel items that were added in the table file. Also, we have a correction on minute dates from our last meeting. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from consent grouping for consideration, separate consideration? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Jenny, moved by Jenny, seconded by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have two items to take action on tonight. The first item is about the superintendent's 2024-25 focus areas. The board is asked to approve the superintendent's focus areas as presented from our last board meeting on August 26th. Is there a motion to approve this item? Moved by Ben and seconded by Amy. Dr. Hillman, any comments on this report?
None, none since the last time.
Okay. Questions and comments from either, or any board members, excuse me. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's focus areas for the 2024-25 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then a reminder that item B was added as part of tonight's table file. The board is asked to approve a request for an additional assistant coach for the boys' cross-country team. Because of high team participation, the prorated cost is $4,435. Is there a motion to approve this item? Moved by Rob, seconded by Ben. Dr. Hillman, any comments?
This is the same, um, ad that you approved last year. They, they, we said it would be for one year. See what the numbers are the next year. So we're in the spec. I do wanna clarify that I do believe that the $4,435 would be the maximum because that amount would be then prorated. Obviously, we don't have that assistant coach on staff yet. So some of the season has already elapsed, so it would be less than the $4,435. But great to see cross-country numbers as high as they are.
Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's focus areas. Sorry, that's the wrong one. I copied the wrong thing. Let's see, motion is to add an assistant additional, or an additional assistant coach for the boys' cross-country team. Because of high team participation, the prorated cost is $4,435. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move to items for information. First and only is retired educator, educators luncheon. Board members are invited to attend the district's annual retired educators luncheon on Friday, October 4th. The luncheon will be held at Ruth's on Stafford beginning at 11:30 AM. If you plan to attend, please RSVP to Anita Ozzy no later than September 26th. Future meetings, we have regular board meetings that are set for September 23rd, October 14th and October 28th at 6:00 PM in the Northfield District Office Boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jeff. Seconded by Jenny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.